Good evening. I now call the Monday, June 10th, 2019 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Invite Gary Walker up. He's a chaplain with Living Faith Church to do our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Chair Rankin. Would you please stand?
Heavenly Father, we give you all the praise and all the honor and all the glory, Lord, and thank you for this opportunity to be here with the planning commissioners, Lord, and we just ask that you bless each and every one of them. Give them wisdom and total understanding, Lord, and those that have their issues before, let it all be as your will be done through the Planning Commission, Lord. Thank you. In Jesus' most precious name, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as it is
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rutherford?
Present.
Commissioner Mussera?
Present.
Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner Deskey? Commissioner Yater? Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Present.
Chairperson Zurcher?
And present. And four out of seven, that makes a quorum. We are good to go. Item number five is approval of minutes from the May 13th, 2019 commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 13th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 13th, 2019.
All right, we'll keep, we'll go with the second for you, Charlie. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All right, moving on. Any announcements? All right. Well, good evening again. My name's Matt Zurcher. I'm the chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll be presiding over this evening's deliberations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits, is an all-volunteer body and sits in advisory capacity to the town council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into the record. Following the identification of the hearing application, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the commission, after which questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will be directed to staff regarding the case. After the commission initially has reviewed the application, the floor will be open for comment, at which time the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. At this point, I'll open the floor to public comment regarding the planning case before the commission. I will ask that you direct your pertinent comments to the commission through the chairperson and not the applicant, staff, or individuals within the audience. I would also appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief and to the point, and I may exercise my prerogative to confine public comment if need be to three-minute intervals per person here this evening. When it comes to the public hearing items, we'll be hearing the first two first, kind of together because they relate to the same thing, and then we'll go on to the third one. And then after we hear from the applicant and staff with regard to the first two, we'll open the floor up at that point for the first two items. So, public hearing items. First is General Plan Amendment 19-001. Upon the application of Northern Arizona Heating and Air, a request for a general plan amendment from high-density residential to regional commercial on lot 6456 in unit 16 in order to adopt the zoning district designation of P1 parking to develop a parking lot in conjunction with the adjacent commercial use on lots 6457 and 6458. Along with that is zoning map change 19-005. Upon the application of Northern Arizona Heating and Air, a request for zoning map change from R2-4 residential multiple dwelling units to P1 parking on lot 6456 in unit 16 in order to develop a parking lot in conjunction with the adjacent commercial use on lots 6457 and 6458. Presenting this evening is Mr. Joe Scott.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. The graphic here and displayed shows the general location of lot 6456, located in unit 16, which is vacant and is currently in the FEMA floodplain. Property north is also vacant in the floodplain. Adjacent lots 6457 and 6458 immediately south, Arizona C3 Commercial with a commercial building and parking for the current Northern Arizona Heating and Air business. Shows our location. The R2 multiple dwelling zoning has been in place since Prescott Valley Incorporated in 1978. Was adopted with the county zoning at the time. The general plan designation was first adopted in general plan 2020, specifically designated R2 as medium-high density residential and was later adopted with the general plan 2025. Most of the northern portion of unit 16, zoned R2, is undeveloped because of impacts of FEMA floodplain. Town policy is not to allow development in connection to the town sewer system within the floodplain. The southern portion of unit 16, between Laredo and Long Mesa, is not in the floodplain. Has always been zoned PM. That was the gray area. Province Manufacturing with larger lots because they're originally located adjacent to the Santa Fe Railroad line, which was later abandoned to the town. And those lots have since been mostly sold to adjacent property owners. Also, within circulation element, proposed future Santa Fe Loop Road extension is represented following the Ogre Free River along the north side of unit 16. For the development of the Santa Fe Loop Road will also involve channeling the floodplain, increasing the availability of property in unit 16 for commercial industrial uses. So the location between major industrial area to the south and future arterial to the north makes it well-suited for such commercial uses. The planning zoning commission, in this case, commercial or for parking. The planning zoning commission and town council have supported commercial zoning and general plan amendments for the lots zoned R2 in unit 16 that are not in the floodplain to P1 parking when impacted by the floodplain but used in conjunction with parking and storage for adjacent primary commercial uses. That happened conducted a neighborhood meeting on May 8th, 2019, and has reported that no one was in attendance or objected. Staff supports the proposed amendment to general plan 2025 to regional commercial and re-zoning to P1 parking in that they are appropriate to this location consistent with past actions and policies of the planning commission and town council. And staff supports both GPA 1901 and ZMC 1905, recommends approval by separate motion. With that, available for any questions. I don't think the applicants are available tonight.
Appreciate it, Joe. Thank you. Any questions from the commission to staff? All right, at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come up if they, if they are here.
I'm not sure their attendance. So they've got some other obligations.
All right, so, seeing that they're not here, then I'd open the floor to public comment for public hearing for both items. Is there anyone here wishing to address the commission on either item? Seeing none, I'll close the floor to public comment for the public hearing section for GPA 19-001 and ZMC 19-005, and bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion to approve general plan amendment 19-001?
I make a motion to approve GPA 19-001.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Zoning map change 19-005, is there a motion to approve, subject to the conditions?
Chairman, I move to approve ZMC 19-005, subject to the listed conditions.
And I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, moving on to zoning map change 19-002. Upon the application of TDA Investments LLC, a request for zoning map change from R2-2 residential multiple dwelling units to RS residential and services on lots 27 and 28, Prescott Country Club Unit 1, located on the northeast corner of Old Chisholm Trail and Arabian Lane in Dewey, Arizona. And Joe, since we heard this at the May 13th, 2019 commission meeting, what has changed from that point to this?
One of the main things with the request that no longer includes lot 29, which is illustrated on this graphic, that was originally proposed to be RS. Currently, that's zone R2, which allows a duplex multifamily, and that will remain with that R2 zoning. And again, as we explain later, so that will provide additional buffer distance from the proposed school to the existing residential to the east. So that's been the main change, and also, as we discussed later in the site plan, lot, all the parking for the facility, as we'll discuss later, is on lot 26, so lot 25, at this point is not involved with the facility. And those two lots, which we'll show later, are currently zoned RS already, and again, lot 25 will not be developed as part of this project and will provide an additional buffer for the time being. So again, when the request was first heard by the commission on May 13th, after, well, as you know, after presentation by staff and a call to public, a motion was made to table the application to further date, to further develop the request, and that motion carried unanimously. So updated background information is now presented, and the issues that were brought up at the last meeting will hopefully be addressed. So again, in a quick review, the applicant did recently purchase a building that had been occupied by the church on Prescott Country Club lots 27 and 28, and previously lots 25 and 26, which are already zoned RS, were used for the church parking. And the owner now wishes to develop a daycare facility on the property. The applicant owned, does own adjacent property in the town limits and referred to be in the town of Prescott Valley, in order to connect to the town sewer system, which is illustrated here on adjacent track B, that's already in the town limits. So upon request to annex, Prescott Country Club lots 25 through 29, the town council approved ordinance 860 on March 14th, 2019, annexing the subject lots, which adopted the RS zoning and R2 zoning that existed in the county. This is a large overview of the zoning. Again, the yellow is the R2 zoning, the white generally is the single-family R1. And you see, the kind of the light purple color is the existing RS that is already in the county in the country club. So, again, the property containing the church structure, which is just lots 27, 28, is zoned R2, which allows for churches but doesn't allow for daycare facilities over 10 children. Thus, the property needs the RS zoning district. Daycare facilities with 10 or fewer children are allowed by state law in any residential district and residential structures subject to building codes and state licensing. This exhibit further shows more detail what's being requested. The two lots that are R2, 27, 28, and shows that, again, 29 is excluded, and that 25 and 26 are already zoned RS as exist up Old Chisholm on the east side towards Country
Joe, let me real quick.
Sure, yeah. If something comes up, go ahead.
A quick question. One of the biggest concerns that came up from the public hearing and some of the commissioners was the solid screening for the proposed play yard. And I see on the site plan, it is now going to be a six-foot fence as opposed to the current four-foot chain link. Is that?
Play area, yeah. If I just progress, yes, that is, and that's shown on the site plan, and the site plan is made part of the conditions of rezoning, but I would, during the motion, stress that, again, the six-foot CMU wall for the play area would be specifically a part of the conditions of rezoning. So let me just review that. Again, the existing, we discussed before, building is about 2,000 square feet with seven rooms. Town building staff feels the property is well-suited for such use that has multiple existing classrooms. Daycare facility will be licensed per the state for childcare facility. The applicant has stated that the number of children would be somewhere between around 40 full-time children, but could expand to 59 with four to five employees. So, again, the applicant, as we discussed last time, had originally installed a four-foot chain link fence in the play area on the east side of the building, that's approximately 40 by 45 feet, shown here on the site plan. Mr. Zelenki of the Prescott Country Club, sorry, Owners Association, discussed the desire by the HOA for a six-foot screen wall for noise mitigation, and others in the audience expressed concerns with the fence, the four-foot fence only meeting minimum requirements, and also suggested six-foot block wall for noise mitigation, mitigation of surrounding properties, and also providing a safer private environment for the children. There are also concerns expressed with traffic, outdoor lighting, parking lot landscaping and screening per town code, which the site plan, I feel, addresses. Again, applicant has indicated their willingness to provide the solid six-foot screen wall for the play area, which is shown on this specific site plan, which is also included as a condition of rezoning. As stated, lot 29 is also owned by TDA Investments and was withdrawn from rezoning request, remains zoned R2 for a duplex or similar product, and provide the additional 80-foot separation between the existing residence to the east and the play area. So again, in review of the concerns expressed about traffic, the traffic statement was prepared, provided at the commission last meeting, and the estimates were based on the maximum enrollment of 59 students and also estimated enrollment actual of 40 students. And those trip generation numbers were addressed and stated that for the town's traffic guidelines, it did not meet the requirements for a full traffic impact analysis. But the conclusions were that under the most extreme conditions, that the new vehicle trips being generated from outside the country, community, and using Prescott Country Club Boulevard and Old Chisholm Trail will continue to operate acceptable service levels, and the traffic statement was provided yet by county for review, and their only comments were that the driveways were better defined, which we feel this site plan accomplishes. So again, shown here with an overlay, the site plan specific does indicate the required parking, one space per 10 children plus one per employee per town code. Again, the parking is all on lot 26, leaving lot 25, that's currently zoned RS, as is similar up Old Chisholm Road, has additional buffer from the project site, although along with the screening, there did be some additional landscaping on the north side. So again, the site plan defines the driveway locations. Now, there's approximately 30 feet between the property line and the existing edge of pavement. Now, within that area, there will be driveway extensions and to the paved lanes of Old Chisholm Trail. The extra area, though not part of the site, does allow for extra site visibility entering and exiting the site. Indicated circulation is one way at the south drive and one way out at the north drive to allow for stacking, for cars to drive in without being out in the roadway, and to minimize conflicts, Old Chisholm Trail. Within the 30-foot between the property and edge of pavement, there is existing landscaping that's similar to other RS along Old Chisholm Trail. Again, questions came up about the screening and landscaping and outdoor lighting and nuisances that are all in the town code, addressed in Article 1326, Section 1326-070, covers nuisances and hazard, and there's a number of hazards dealing with the smoke and discharge of wastewater, glare and vibration, physical hazards, and though anyone that applies, staff feels is objection to noise beyond the boundary of the district. So the only, with that being said, but as described by the applicant, the playtimes are limited. There's already significant noise from local roads. State Route 69 is stated from the restaurant, and staff believes the six-foot block wall provides significant noise mitigation, as suggested by the HOA and the neighbors. As far as screening, Section 1326-040I-5, just a screening for park areas with more than eight spaces situated across from residential districts. And that states that shall be screened by a solid 100% screening wall, four feet in height above the finished grade of the parking area, adjacent to the roadway. And such wall should be installed between the landscape border and the parking area and may encroach into the landscape area. Again, so the site plan does illustrate location of four-foot screen walls located on the property along Old Chisholm Trail in front of the indicated parking spaces. There are existing landscape areas along Old Chisholm Trail in front of the screen located on the site. These landscape areas will be enhanced to town standards with a landscape buffer added on, again, on the north side of the parking lot, but staff doesn't, should suggest that there doesn't need to be a screen wall there because of the separation. Again, so, and also, at the May 13 meeting, Chairperson Zuchter stated that other businesses along Old Chisholm are within Yowapie County jurisdiction and have the same county zoning. He asked if there would become RS zoning if they were annexed in the town of Prescott Valley. Again, any properties annexed by Prescott Valley retain the zoning. It's most similar to the county. The Prescott Valley RS zoning district is derived from the county RS district, which was provided in packet in Exhibit E, and show that the uses are very similar. At the hearing, Commissioner Mussera asked for clarification as to whether there, I'll go to that, here's, probably can't read that, that shows the exhibits from the county, county code, which is similar to the towns. Again, so Commissioner Mussera asked for clarification as to whether they were approving the zoning request specifically for daycare or could allow other uses that could be established. Staff suggests that the personal services and professional services and office uses that would be allowed, would be allowed, but no retail sales are allowed. Included in, again, your brief are the uses allowed in the town RS district. Staff suggests that most, all the allowed uses are less intensive than daycare, but with that recommend excluding certain uses that are shown in your brief that would be incompatible with the neighborhood. And those would include hospitals, clinics, sanitariums, and nursing homes for care of humans, institutions of education, religious or charitable or philanthropic nature, private clubs, lodges, or fraternal organizations operate solely for the benefit of bona fide members. And last but not least, mobile home manufacturer, manufactured home parks, which probably wouldn't really work there. But again, those are some of the more intensive uses that would be specifically excluded. And reported last meeting, neighborhood meeting was held on March 5th, 2019, with property owners within 1,000 feet being notified. It was at that time reported that seven persons attended, and some meeting was previously provided to the commission along with correspondence from property owners of the town. Since then, the town hasn't received any further comments. I've had discussions with representatives of the HOA regarding the proposed changes, and they will probably want to get up and address some of those themselves. So again, the general plan designation is low-density residential, but supports the RS zoning district for the town code land use table. The property is now in the town limits and is required to be connected to the sanitary system, a line that exists in the town boundary. A traffic statement was prepared by a registered professional analyzing the impacts of the daycare to the existing traffic conditions and showing acceptable level of service of the adjacent roadways. So since then, a site plan has been developed to guide development of the property for the conditions of approval of the town code. So staff supports the proposed amended rezoning from R2 to RS on lots 27 and 28. The proposed daycare facility recommends that ZMC 1902 be approved and forwarded to town council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the conditions in the brief, and again, specifically number C, that development of the usage shall be performance with the site plan for all and all applicable town code divisions, and I would add specifically include the six-foot CMU wall for the play area. So with that, I'm, we'll conclude. I can answer any questions.
Appreciate it, Joe.
I know that HOA members are here, and I think the applicant also.
Any questions of staff from the commission?
Joe, just out of my own, for my own curiosity, the balance of lots that the county has done zoning on, on the north side of Old Chisholm, that are all RS, are those, is that zoning that's been in place for a long time, or is it zoning that's been changed somewhat recently?
I can't answer exactly. I, I know it's been quite a while since, I believe, since at least the town incorporation, but I.
You tell, keep that line of the government, I mean, in 1972.
Early recent.
There you go. So, 72, I wish.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff?
I have a question about why you are requiring a solid block wall as noise mitigation. In the course of, over the last number of years, I've heard enough expert testimony from engineers qualified in noise mitigation to know that a six-foot block wall is not going to have any effect on noise. I know you would expect it to have some effect, but a 12-foot wall wouldn't provide noise mitigation.
I'm not an expert on that. This is what was the, some of the property owners and the HOA felt would be acceptable, and the applicant thought that would provide better noise mitigation than a open four-foot chain link fence. So I've kind of left it to them to sort that out. I am not acoustic, I can't. I mean, I'm about to the area, I've listened to what people have talked about, the highway noise, restaurant noise, car noise. I would think it would have some effect, but I can't, I can't give you a decimal level, I can't.
Well, I've, I've heard enough to know that it's not a logical thing, that sound will go where it will go. Where there's air, there's sound. And we're asking to do a meaningless thing unless there are other good reasons for having solid screening, which there may well be.
I know the four-foot chain link's minimum, and that's the.
A speaker at the last meeting brought up concern about safety of children, fact that they were highly visible through a chain link fence. One of the issues, again, that is addressed by a fully mosaic structure, is that you're not able to view children off the property because they're not taller than six feet in height.
That's a very legitimate reason.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff from the commission? All right, I'll invite the applicant to come up if they're here. Would you please state your name for the record?
My name is Jeff Hall. I'm an employee of TDA Investments. I think Joe Scott did a pretty good job presenting what the application states. I did meet with the POA, just so you guys are aware, and I feel like I addressed the issues, the block wall, some of the parking screening, and some of the restrictions we put on the RS zoning, just to keep the retail shops and stuff out of there. So as far as the POA's concerned, I think we just want to keep a good standing relationship with them because we do own a little bit of property down there, and we want to do some stuff going forward. So as far as I'm, no, to my knowledge, we are, we are in agreeance with them as far as, is what is required by them or what they ask us to do.
And I want to say, I appreciate the meeting of the minds to hammer those details out.
Other than that, any questions?
Oh, I'll take that from, from here. Thank you, Jeff. Any questions of the applicant for the commission? All right. Seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment on this matter. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission for this issue?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Lynch. I am board secretary for the POA for the Prescott Country Club, and I would really like to thank Jeff. He did come and meet with us. We had a very productive meeting, and I think we all came to an agreement, and he did a wonderful job addressing all of our concerns and the concerns of the community, and I look forward to a productive future communications with them. I think that he really did a great job representing his company, and we're very I, I think that he really did a great job representing his company, and, and we're very pleased.
I'm Al Zalinski. I'm a director with the Prescott Country Club Property Owners Association, and I agree with everything that Jennifer said, and I'd like to thank Chairperson Zucker.
Zurcher.
Zurcher. And, and the rest of the commission for, you know, listening to us and hearing our concerns and tabling it. It gave us an opportunity to sit down with Jeff and work things out in a very civil manner, and we appreciate that. Would also like to thank Joe Scott for his efforts on this, and also Richard Parker. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Germans, and I'm a resident of Prescott Country Club. Although I don't live on Old Chisholm, I still live a resident that uses the roads there. And I can tell you that two years ago, approximately two years ago, there was a hit and run of a pedestrian on Old Chisholm not far from this property, just a few doors down. It was a death. We have no sidewalks there. Has that been taken into consideration in the, in the studies that were done? No sidewalks, kids going to that facility. I have a real concern with the safety of the children. My second concern revolves around the traffic itself, with most people that, that are going to be using this facility are probably coming from outside of the Prescott Country Club. And if they are, they're going to be coming past the Maverick Gas Station on Prescott Country Club Boulevard. And if you're aware, there's been a number of traffic accidents at the intersection of the Prescott Country Club Boulevard and the driveway into Maverick. It is a serious problem. And, you know, we looked at, at the numbers of 59, four, plus four or five employees. Is there any restriction from having two shifts of that in a day? Could they have a morning shift where there's 59 children coming and another afternoon shift, which would essentially double the traffic? What about evenings? What about streetlights? We have no streetlights there. These are kids. They're not adults. Adults walk the streets there because we have no sidewalks. What are we going to do about these kids? The safety. That's all comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Kathleen O'Neill. Hi, my name is Kathleen O'Neill, and I live within three lots of the proposed daycare center. You've heard arguments about the traffic, the children, and everything else. What I'm going to give you is some statistics. On North Old Chisholm Trail, on the irregular frequencies that we have had traffic citations written, one out of every traffic citations has been issued between Arabian and Sturapi Drive East on Old Chisholm. This amounts to 12.5 of all tra, pardon me, traffic citations issued in the Prescott Country Club. Also, what people haven't been bringing up is there's a hill directly beyond Arabian on Chisholm, making it a blind intersection. All of us in the neighborhood have experienced at least one close call within a short amount of time. Therefore, it makes for very dangerous driving when you're pulling out right onto Chisholm. It also makes for dangerous times when you're pulling into our neighborhood off of Chisholm. All of a sudden, you have a speeding car coming down the hill, barreling toward Prescott Country Club Drive, and it, we haven't had accidents there, but when you include 172 additional trips as projected by your traffic survey, the possibilities of an accident become a probability. We have to consider the children, just like we just mentioned, and their safety. The parents are under time constraints to get to work on time. They're on those same straights trying to pick their children up, and so they're going to be hampered by poor visibility, heavy traffic, and generally, it's going to be a bad situation that's made worse. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Carol McKinney.
Go ahead and speak a little bit more into the microphone, please.
Hi, my name is Carol McKinney. Can you ask Mr. Hendrickson where all the children are coming from? Are they all from within our community or from outside community? Is this really a good place for a daycare center? Surely, there is more, a more appropriate business in this community with a lot less traffic. When asked at the last meeting, what was Mr. Hendrickson's plans for the property if the daycare center didn't work out? I don't believe we received a specific answer. Is that going to be addressed here today? When someone stated at the last meeting that it is already hard enough to get out of their driveways on Chisholm Road, that this influx of traffic will make it even more difficult. Mr. Hendrickson compared our traffic on Chisholm to the traffic on Manley Drive in Prescott Valley, where he has another daycare. It's not the same situation, there's no comparison. In addition, we have a big, big impact already at our front entrance on Country Club Drive, where the Maverick Gas Station. The daycare center will add even more of an impact. The amount of traffic at the entrance affects everyone that lives in the country club. Our roads are county roads, and a business should not be allowed to bring in this much additional traffic into our neighborhood. That's not safe for the children as well. Aren't daycare centers usually in a commercial setting? How would you feel if someone wanted to bring a daycare center to your area right next door to you, within hearing range? There is a house that literally is right next door. Is a daycare center the proper business for this area? I feel sorry for the gentleman that lives that close. I talked with Joe Scott May 14th after emailing him my disagreement of the rezoning, and he said he would give it to the committee, but I didn't see it or two other residents that were writing letters in there, in the pamphlet. And that day, he said he would send me a letter notifying me when the planning and zoning meetings were. I didn't get a letter for the last meeting, and I didn't receive one for this meeting. My neighbor, I have her letter here, that just lives two doors down from me, and I'm probably about four houses up on Sturapi Drive East from the daycare center. She received a letter, this meeting and last meeting, but I didn't receive one. And I have my letter here that I sent to Mr. Joe Scott. If you need that, submit it.
Go ahead and submit it for the record.
And I have her letter. Pardon?
Go ahead and give them to Kristy for the record.
Should I give her letter as well, that she got a letter?
Go for it.
And I'm literally two doors down from her.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion for this item. I'll invite the applicant to come back up and answer, ask, answer any of the questions or issues that have come up.
As far as traffic goes, I, I, I think we're going to be getting most of the people from Quillwood, so the Maverick Gas Station, that would be my prediction. I mean, I can't say for sure, but there's a bunch of kids that live right across the street, and the easiest way to get over to the country club is to go right by the Blue Hills, or Blue Hills Cafe and come in the back way off Old Chisholm. And, I mean, as far as speeding cars, there's not much a daycare can, can do about knocking the speeding down. I know, I know last time we were down there, we had some issues, and we contacted the sheriff's department, and they came right down and just put some extra cars in the area. So if that's his concern, maybe, maybe you take that route. And as far as the kids' safety, it is an indoor facility, so other than the six-foot block wall, so I don't see the kids really getting out and running around the street. But, other than that, I think it's, it's, it's a good place for a daycare. I think we're going to get a lot of people in the country club. I'm familiar with the country club. As you know, a few of you, I, I used to own the country club. I have a house in the country club. We're familiar with the neighborhood. I know there's a lot of kids in there. And then obviously, across the street, in the Quillwood residence over there, there's plenty of kids over there as well.
Up to the microphone, sir.
Chairman Zurcher, is that right?
Zurcher.
Would it be possible to, you know, I understand people having concerns about the kids, you know, mixing with traffic, you know, I don't, I don't really see the kids getting out of the, out of the zoo, so to speak, but, you know, should they, or would it be possible for Prescott Valley to put up a slow children sign or something like that in the right-of-way there now that it's being, it's annexed and zoned?
That's something I'll have Richard discuss.
That's a simple thing, you know.
We can make contact with Yavapai County. It's a Yavapai County right-of-way. Joe Ewatt would be the special projects administrator that would assist that in, in that regard. We can make contact, can't make him do anything, but I, for one, contacted the county because I was tired of people screaming down my hill, and they posted it with signs. They put a speed sensor out there for three days, after which sheriff sat in my driveway and wrote tickets. It was most effective.
All righty. Any other, we'll bring it back to the commission. Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions of the commission?
I had some reservations about this, Mr. Chairman. So I went back to the purpose of the zoning ordinance for RS, and it says, "The purpose of the RS district is to provide for orderly and compatible development in transition, transitional areas between residential and non-residential districts, and to establish and preserve areas for those commercial facilities which will, which are especially useful in close proximity to residential areas while minimizing the undesirable impact of such uses on the neighborhoods which they service." And my first thought was, how does that serve Prescott Country Club? However, the ordinance does not say that it has to be for that specific neighborhood. It says for residential areas, and there are residential areas nearby that would benefit from it. And of course, there are children in Prescott Country Club. I used to love seeing the school buses stop there, seeing the kids hop off. But it seems to me that by the POA getting together with the developer and working things out amicably, that that has pretty much taken care of the reservations that I had about it. But it has been quite a process, and I can't make up my mind until I've heard it all, and now I think I've.
And I would agree with Commissioner Rutherford that initially, yeah, I think a lot of us had reservations, and we definitely appreciate the meeting of the minds to resolve some of the concerns that came up, and so we definitely appreciate that. Anything else from the commission? All right, at this time, I'll ask for a motion for zoning map change 19-002. Sorry, sir, you're out of order.
I'm going to make a motion for approval of CMC 19-002.
And then we forward the recommendation to town council with all the subject conditions?
Yes.
Is, all right. It's moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it passes. We'll now move on to action items. That's item number eight. We have quite a few of these, so we'll take them one by one. Reversionary plat 19-003, upon the application of the Dyson Council for, for the Society of St. Vincent de Paul, Phoenix Council, a request for reversionary plat to remove the common line between lots 584 and lots 585 and 586, Prescott Valley Unit 2, located on the east side of Dowling Court between John Court and Dana Drive. Anything more to this, Joe?
Bye-bye. I think you almost, you described it.
Okay.
Again, to, they want to construct a building in the lots, and the intent of this is to get rid of that lot line, and also with the reversionary plat, there's a, getting rid of an easement that's no longer in use, so.
Okay. Any other, any questions from the commission?
Somebody from church, if you want to talk.
And appreciate the applicant being here. You can come up if you want, if you have anything more to add.
No, we're, we're okay if you don't want. Yep, we're, we're good.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you for talking.
I think we're good, too. All right. Is there a motion to approve RP 19-003?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve. I'm trying to read this through dark glasses. RP 19-003, subject to the recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to item, action item number two, RP 19-004. Upon the application of Pronghorn Development LLC, a request for reversionary plat to make adjustments to slope easements, drainage easements, and public utility easements for Lot 42 and Pronghorn Ranch Unit 1 amended. Anything more to add, Joe?
No, again, that's just stating there are four reversionary plats involving the different lots described in your packet, and so these are all in, in Granville, Unit 1 amended, and so with that, just want to make a separate motion for each of the reversionary plats four through seven.
All right. Anything from the commission or a motion? All right, is there a motion to approve RP 19-004?
I'd like to make a motion to approve RP 19-004.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Aye, as well. Item number three, RP 19-005. Upon the application of Pronghorn Development LLC, a request for reversionary plat to make adjustments to slope easements, drainage easements, and public utility easements for lots 31 and 1313 and Pronghorn Ranch Unit 1 amended. Anything else, Joe?
Nope.
All right. Bring it back to the commission. Any questions or a motion?
Make a motion to approve RP 19-005.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item number four, RP 19-006. Upon the application of Pronghorn Development LLC, a request for reversionary plat to make adjustments to slope easements, drainage easements, and public utility easements for lots 35 and 36 and Pronghorn Ranch Unit 1 amendment. Anything else, Joe?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Moving on, is there a motion or any comment?
Motion to approve RP 19-006.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number five, RP 19-007. Upon the application of Pronghorn Development LLC, a request for reversionary plat to make adjustments to slope easements, drainage easements, and public utility easements for lots 40 and 41 and Pronghorn Ranch Unit 1 amended. Anything else? All right, bring it back to the commission.
I'd like to make a motion to approve RP 19-007.
Is there a second? All right. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number six, RP 19-008. Upon the application of DH Pronghorn LLC, a request for reversionary plat to adjust the common lot line between Lot 1041 and Track 115 in Pronghorn Ranch Unit 17 to avoid utility conflicts. Anything else?
Nope, again, those are in, Unit 17 are being developed by Dorn Homes, so.
Okay.
Recommend approval.
Questions or a motion?
Make a motion to approve RP 19-008.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number seven, RP 19-009. Upon the application of DH Pronghorn LLC, a request for reversionary plat to adjust the rear lot lines for lots 1052 and lots and Lot 0153 to avoid utility conflicts. Anything from the commission or a motion? Anything from the commission or a motion?
Make a motion to approve RP 19-009.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of, for approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number eight, RP 19-010. Upon the application of Universal Homes Construction, a request for a versionary plat, not play, plat, to adjust the common lot line between lots 2441 and 2442, and lots 2443 and 2444, Granville Unit 11. Anything from the commission, Joe?
Yep, just real quickly, these were lots where they did the duplex lots, where actually they put the, the one home in each lot with the common wall in the middle, and, and it was a foot off, so it would have affected some of the setbacks utilities, so this will just adjust those, the common lot line.
All right. Is there, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve RP 19-010.
Is there a second? All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item number nine, Call to the Public. Consideration of Discussion of Comments from the Public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a, as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and discussion, decision at a later date. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll close Call to the Public, and we'll move on to item number 10, adjournment of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those, is, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.